Good evening, everyone. My name is David Fries. I'm the mayor of Tongonoxie. I'm calling to order this April 3, 2023, meeting of the Tongonoxie City Council. Ms. Huntington, would you call the roll and note that I'm present?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Partridge?
Here.
Ms. McCutcheon is absent. Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Donnelly? He's here, stepped away. And Mr. Dale?
Here.
Would you join us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two on the agenda tonight is the approval of minutes where we review the minutes from the previous meeting. Did anyone have any conversation or corrections or questions concerning the minutes from the last meeting? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item three on the agenda is the consent agenda. We'll review where we review the bill payments from the previous period. Are there any questions, concerns, or conversation or questions about the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Item four, the agenda is old business. Seeing none, this is also the time when we see if there's anyone who signed up to speak before the deadline to address the body for three minutes. Mr. Porter, is there anyone here?
We have one speaker, Mayor.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for letting me have this opportunity to address you. You will see a piece of paper I gave you. This is addressing the cost to the county now on doing certain projects. If you notice, 80/20 match on this certain bridge project, the original cost that was going to be the county's portion to put in a new bridge was $250,000. It's now going to be $523,000. So the point of that is that the cost of us putting a bridge in has mounted from around $1.2 million to ranging up towards $2 million. So I'm sure that's affecting you guys on your projects as well, but that is something we wanted to bring to your attention that is happening. And then that dovetails into the second part. The letter I put in front of you, so I wanted to personally ask the council to consider meeting with the county board of commissioners to discuss the 222nd Street and improvements and other issues. We've met with the city of Leavenworth, we met with the city of Lansing. We still have to meet with Baser, Tongonoxie, and then we're going to meet with the two smaller communities as well. So if, and one issue on the agenda is the base grant application. If you look on the third page of the document, you'll see our public works director put together the estimated price for the improvements on 222nd Street. Be around $2 million, almost $2,100,000. To do that, if we were able to obtain a base grant through the state, which is a Build a Stronger Economy Grant, which is a federal pass-through grant, the approximate amount that the county slash other local governments would have to come up with would be approximately $900,000. So we want to get together and visit with you about that. The county did overlay the road, and that would cost us around $75,000 last summer. The amount of truck traffic out there, the road is deteriorating. And that another overlay would cost approximately $100,000. That, but at the rate that it's deteriorating, it's a very significant issue, and we would like to, we would like to have a conversation with you about it. Another issue that I would like to visit with you quickly about is if you look at the third page and the Senate working its way through the legislatures, House Bill 2036, passed through the Kansas House 123 to 1. The bill would exempt nearly all veterans from property taxes to some extent. According to the census data, there are roughly 9,000 veterans in the county. According to the Bureau of Labor Services, 27% of all veterans have some level of service-connected disability. Of those with a disability rating, 77% had a rating of 30% or higher, and 50% had a disability rating of 60%. Based on that, we have 1,300... Can I have a moment more?
Yep.
We have 1,365 veterans in Leavenworth County that would qualify for a 60% to 70% property tax exemption. Another 2,529 veterans would qualify for a 90% to 100% property tax exemption. If only half of the veterans are property owners and live in average-value home, $284,000, the potential impact to the, to the county's share, and this is only the county's share, of the property taxes would be over $2 million or in the $2 million range. This would also impact each community according to how many veterans they have in the communities. So we just want to make you aware of this. This is really a potential impact for Leavenworth, of course, Gary and Manhattan area, Gary County, Riley County, Wichita, Cedro County. So I'm not sure if this is something we, we want to, this is what our legislators about. You know, normally if they do something like this, you get a payment in lieu of taxes to the community comes back or some kind of arrangement like that. But I'm not sure the legislators have even thought through what their, I mean, it sounds really good to, to help veterans. That sounds good, but when you look at the impact that's going to have, it's going to impact all of our budgets. So that's all I had. I would really appreciate if we could set a time to meet and have a discussion about, certainly about that road and any other issues that you guys have. All I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Are there any questions for the commissioner?
I appreciate you bringing up 222nd Street. I think we ought to have a conversation. It's an important piece.
There's, I know that the county administrator is looking at presenting when we have, he's preparing for this meeting. If we can get together and he'll present several options that we have. There's bonding and there's other options, but we certainly, certainly if that's going to develop out there and more industry is going to come in, we don't want the road to be falling apart. So.
Definitely.
Right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Porter, anyone else?
No other signups, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to new business then. Item A is Leavenworth County Regional Transportation Plan Capital Improvement Plan update. Mr. Brackovich?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. We've got a couple of folks here tonight that are with Kimley Horn or another consulting firm that's part of the project. And Jeff is coming to the podium to do a quick presentation. This is just as a quick reminder, you'll probably recall Greg Cause was here some time back asking for countywide participation in a way to develop a priority scale for large-scale transportation-related projects in the county that involved either the county being a funding partner, a state agency, a federal agency, and the county feeling that there was a flood of requests that far exceeded the county's ability to participate in each and every project, and wanted to hire a third party to develop some sort of matrix or evaluation process that would fairly equalize all of these various projects that range in cost, scope, impacts to community, and a variety of things that I'm sure Jeff's going to cover in his presentation. So Jeff, if you want to add anything to what I just said, feel free to do so. Otherwise, it's, feel free to take over.
All right. Well, thank you very much. By the way, it is allergy season, so I apologize for clearing my throat and hopefully I got enough water to just through. Again, my name's Jeff McCarr with Kimley Horn. I'm joined tonight with James Siemens with Finis Communication, helping us out on this project. And I think George did a great job of summarizing the intent of this, is to really take a look at a lot of things that have happened in the past and try to pull those together today and how we take those steps forward and evaluate. Want to go through a little bit about our project approach, what we're going to look at. I want to recap some of the engagement we've done today so far and talk about probably that consolidated list of projects that we've had. So if we take the past 30 years of plans that have been done and initiated by, by the county, by different cities, by KDOT, sometimes by private citizens, and we pull those together to say, let's look and start to evaluate these projects, how do we evaluate them, and then how do you think about, would you prioritize those? And what's important, what are the values you want to place on that? We'll show you a little bit of an initial testing of a tool that we are in development of. It is still draft. We want to hear from you tonight about some of these processes we move forward. I'd encourage you to ask questions as we go along the way. If I'm going too fast or too slow, let me know. Mayor Pro Tim, you've got a sneak peek at this. She can jump in here and guide us too, hopefully a little bit. The approach to our project really kind of looks at a couple of things. When we started this, we focused on two different things. One was what we call the criteria development. How are we actually going to evaluate projects? What are the technical means behind this? So when you think of all the different funding opportunities that are out there, they have their own defined criteria, what they view as important. So we wanted to start to document those. And then listen, are there other things that you think are important that we want to look at that? At the same time, we want to take a look at all those projects that are out there, open it up for other ideas to come in on projects, and start to really develop a list that we want to evaluate and go through. Today, we've actually gone through a lot of those steps. We're to the point now where we've gone through some additional prioritization. We want to hear what's working, what makes sense from you all. Are there things we need to revisit? Are there projects we should add that weren't considered? Are there different criteria you want to look at? Our goal here is to really continue through this process so you kind of see that ranking of projects that you can consider depending on what the funding source you might look at. You've got an idea as a community of what projects rise to that level that you think are probably those highest priorities. Our goal is to wrap this up this summer, I'll tell you that, partly because KDOT will be doing their next round of local consult this fall and late summer. So you will have some information, hopefully as a community, as a county, that you can go to KDOT and say, these are projects that we think are important, and we want you to move forward. I'll tell you, that's a very important for KDOT is to hear from people working together to set those priorities. It carries a lot of weight. I'll tell you, some of your neighbors in the metropolitan area here, be it Johnson County or Leavenworth County, come with united, strong voices, and they are succeeding at getting projects at a higher rate than what we've seen historically here in Leavenworth County. So working together and having this plan, KDOT actually is putting some money into this as well. I think you might recall that. They want to see what the community says. It's important to them. We had a round of stakeholder meetings in October, late October, early November last year, and really focused on a number of different targeted audiences, from existing industries to the EDCs and port authorities, chambers of commerce, school districts, industrials and developers, really to try to get their input on subjects as we talked about that. We had more than 40 participants at those meetings, and we heard some themes that came out of that. One of those was really that strong desire to see an increase in connections between communities within the county. Another was the importance of K7, and just how that is a link to so much commerce and activity for them. We heard a lot of support for bicycle accommodations, and the desire to really balance that quality of life in the rural environment here. Let's, thinking of Leavenworth County, what it is and what so many people value about this. We also heard very clearly from MoDOT that they have no current plans to extend 152 Highway. But there might be some interest, particularly the community of Parkville, and a few others on the Missouri side for that project. We did hear resoundingly there was a desire for enhanced regional access, be that east to 152 Highway or to KCI, or south to DeSoto and the new Panasonic plant. Resoundingly, we heard that there was a, there was a preference for improving local roads to building brand-new facilities on new alignments. Want to ask, I know this is a little small to see here. What do they, what are the priorities you might have? So if you were to say, what's my first or second or third priority, where would we rate those? With this round of stakeholders, what we found was those projects that helped spur economic improvements and have a positive economic impact were those highest priorities. And access to jobs, or what we refer to as equity, that also came in very high up there. Congestion and safety followed behind that, mobility issues and sustainability were kind of distant at the end. We had a couple of public meetings. We had over 70 attendees in November. Common themes you started to hear again was that access to Panasonic and DeSoto. Had a lot of identification of spot improvements through the process, and a desire for bike routes and trails to be taken into consideration. There was a desire for visibility in the process. This was important. That it wasn't a black box or a political, purely political, what project is the highest rank. They wanted to be able to see, how did you develop this? How, what was the process that led to you? There was one project that we were actually somewhat surprised that we kept hearing recurring on, and that was about the Patriot Highway. Some of you may recall that from a few years ago. There was little support for that, very vocal that as we had that as an example project up there, people pointed out they didn't want to see that. That was a route that was largely on a new road alignment, not building on those existing facilities. When asked about priorities for that, economic impact remained one of those top priorities. Mobility and congestion and safety all ranked close together as well moving forward. Then we had an online meeting. We had 55 comments provided of that. There was some support for some sort of outer loop type facility, but only if it were to be really built on existing alignments. They identified a lot of safety spot concerns, and there was little support for expansion projects on the west side that really like an East Lawrence bypass or a new alignment for US 2440. Not to say there wasn't some support for continuing to keep 2440 in good shape. We also heard that there was a desire for bicycle accommodations. From the online community, we saw safety was their top concern, followed by economic impact and mobility, and then congestion after that.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yep.
Could you go back two slides? It says, little support for expansion project on west side, East Lawrence bypass, US 2440 alignment. Can you give me some examples of what negative comments there were against that?
I wouldn't say there were any, well, the, the negative comments had to do with, there were some routes that had 2440 on a brand-new alignment, and they didn't want to see that. What I'd say, there just wasn't many people saying they had an interest in seeing anything happen to 2440.
So how, how did that, how was that question asked? How was that question posed?
We had online, we had maps in person as well as online where people could look at the different projects, and they could provide comments for or against. And that was one in which we just didn't see many comments, whatever, at all about. So it wasn't necessarily a vote up or down. It was, we weren't seeing votes at all.
Okay, thank you.
From an online priorities, oh, we hit that one already. So initially, these were the categories and some of the projects that we had seen and started to take a look at. Again, that had been identified by a lot of different sources over the past more than two decades. By and large, none of which had actually been constructed or advanced beyond the planning stage. What you'll see are some of these projects actually pretty much overlap with each other. Some of them are parallel to each other. We shared these with the public, and we started to get those responses and what were those inputs we're looking at, and got a lot of feedback through that process. Also met with your staff, the staffs with other communities, to talk about those projects as we move forward. And we took what was this kind of far-reaching with lots of different ideas and narrowed it down to 43 different projects. And we're not going to go through all those today. You'll be able to see those. We want to talk about them. These are projects that could be combined. For instance, we identified upgrades on K7 to several interchanges. That could be one big project. There are also projects that could be divided and built in smaller portions if needed. The total capital cost we identified today's construction dollars is about $1.5 billion. And projects range from just under $500,000 to over $350 million. So a wide range of projects, and depending on how you're going to fund those, you'll generally find different sources of funds. You're going to go for those different projects. So again, these are major expansion projects. This isn't your routine maintenance that occurs. One we, we looked and evaluated projects was what we looked at, a phrase called travel sheds, which is to compare how far you can get in 10 or 20 or 30 minutes today, and then what happens when we add a new project in the future. And you could start to see then that if you built certain projects, your ability to access jobs, your ability to access different attraction zones, your ability to access different residents who might come to do business with you starts to change. The example we'll show you today is what we call the Eastern Gateway. This is the connection over to 152 Highway on the north side. On the left is how you can get from the city of Lansing today, and where you can get in that 10, 20, and 30-minute increment. On the right is what happens after you build that Eastern Gateway project. And if you overlay those, you see that you have much more access to populations and employment and key destinations like education and community centers, parks and grocery stores, and medical facilities. Pause there as I take a drink here. We looked at several different areas when we started to evaluate these projects and what we could actually define and calculate tangibly as we move forward. So what is things we could actually calculate? Talk about traffic operations and user delays, safety, access to amenities and population, economic development and job access, equity, sustainability and reliability. Is it, are you more able to reliably get access to different locations? Took a look at some other factors, and then we started to identify project costs as well, not only construction costs, but what is that ongoing operation of maintenance you'd have to understand. Those were actually used to develop a tool. We'll talk through some of the process here a little bit. I know you can't read all that. In fact, we, we put in generic names because we want you to, we want to talk about the process a little bit, and then we'll start to show what the actual projects and how they started to, to come to evaluation. The idea that the metrics that you find, be it economic development, be it traffic operations or safety, how we calculate those scores remains the same. It's how you decide you have a preference in weighting those. So if you decide that safety is the most important, and you put the most points you might have on safety, you'll see this project list change on what becomes that top priority. Or if you put economic development as your number one, and don't worry about anything else, you'll see a different change in projects. But it gives you that ability to say, what do you value as a community? What do you all value as a council? And start to see how those projects might come up or down. Going into those different categories, we'll talk about traffic operations and user delays. These are actually going out into the future using the regional model from Minnebeck or Regional Council that estimates traffic flows and all that. So we could take a look at traffic volumes and changes once we build projects, and what does that mean to the change in vehicle hours of delay out there? So if you build a project, are people spending less time in their vehicles to get from point A to point B? So we take those and normalize those to a series of scores from 0 to 100 in those categories and weight that. We talk about access to opportunity in a lot of categories here. What is that access to population? So if you're building a different route, what does that give your locals, locations more people that you can access? Is it access to jobs? Is it access to key destinations that are out there? Or economic development areas, and how do we rate those? Is it access to freight? So that if you look at something that's a business that is freight reliant, we know that we have more reliability that is out there. Quality of life, and then some yes or no questions about your proximity to schools. We want to document that, as well as your proximity to parks and recreation. Those seem like odd questions, but when you look at some of the federal grants, those are questions you're going to need to understand and be able to answer as well moving forward. We took those two categories, and they really came into two different scoring areas. Try to read this here. One of them comes down to population amenity access. The other comes to economic development and how those would score out. So the two different colors of those move forward together. From an equity standpoint, there are some federal criteria that define areas of persistent poverty, historically disadvantaged communities, as well as opportunity zones. And these are federally designated zones. And when you look at some of the federal grants, they become important criteria. I will tell you, the only places in which we have those is in the city of Leavenworth itself. But that becomes a factor as we look at that and move forward. And again, we, we normalize those scores to an equity score. On sustainability and resiliency, we looked at what is the change in vehicle miles traveled. So if we build an improvement and we have to spend less miles driving, that's less pollution, less dust getting kicked up on gravel roads, things of that nature that can have an impact possibly in the environment. Is it a project that is going to take and replace a bridge that is in poor condition? And think about the resiliency that's needed there and the sustainability. Is it a project that's going to eliminate a little water crossing? Or, step back here. Was a project that is part, that has a trail that's part of the county or the, or the Minnebeck Regional Council's trail package? Were we filling in sidewalk gaps that don't exist today? So how are some of those metrics taken into account on the sustainability and resiliency? And using those developing that score to move forward. From a safety standpoint, we know the crashes that have occurred in that route. Like we have six years' worth of crash data that we're able to look at. And we also know, we've done a lot of researches in industry to understand that if we make certain improvements, we're going to see a reduction in injury accidents, fatal accidents, and just accidents overall. So if we start to quantify those, we look at the projects, what happens if we add rumble strips and add a shoulder to a road that doesn't have it? What does that mean for safety? And we can project what's that reduction in crashes? And use that to generate our safety score for those projects moving forward. We're also going to look at a few other categories. Project cost certainly being one of those, so you understand what those are. Project readiness, which is how do you think you could actually get the project out there? One of the ways we're going to look at that is the environmental clearance process. If it's a project, and again, if we're using federal funds, that has to go through the deeper process that we think is probably what we designate a category of exclusion, that's a pretty typical standard permitting issue, won't take you too long to get through. The next level up would be an environmental assessment, meaning we think we're going to be okay, but we got to document a lot more. That process may take a year. And then there's NEIS or environmental impacts statement. Those can be multi-year processes to get ready. If you think of some of the large federal grants that are out there, these mega grants that exist, they want to know if the president's administration... they want to know if the president's administration awards you a project, you're going to be able to get out there and build it quickly. So it's not speculation. So if you're not through that NEPA process, you're not going to compete well for those type of projects. So we want to kind of show you where you are in those categories and understand. You might have a great project that makes sense on one of those big federal mega grant projects, but we're just not ready yet to to apply. And that becomes an important criteria as we move forward. The other aspect that we look at is the number of communities impacted. This becomes important, again, for the same reason. They like to see on some of these grants that the more people that are impacted, if it's a project that's helping more than just one community out, they see a lot of support for that. In addition, I'll tell you that if you've got more than one community voicing support for your project, that makes a difference particularly with KDOT as you move forward. And ultimately, that's one of the goals. As you go through this process and we start evaluating projects, that the Leavenworth County community with all the different cities and all that, if you can identify projects that you all think, even if it's not in your backyard, but it makes sense and you can agree that it brings value to the community at large and you support it, that project will fare better in the KDOT consult project going after competitive funds. When you're applying and working against or working for the same dollars that Johnson County, that Wichita, that Topeka and Lawrence are going after, the more united front you can provide, the stronger your application is going to be. So we started to take a look and you could see we started to change some of those priorities, which is those yellow boxes up top. How do you rate different projects? What's important to you from a traffic operations standpoint, from safety? If you had a hundred points to divvy up and you weighted those different categories, different important, different levels, your projects will change. Whereas going from here, we're changing some of those criterias, you see some of those projects move up or down a little bit. But by and large, what you find is the projects are somewhat grouped together. That certain projects all are in one category, others aren't another. So so far, we had a lot of, had a lot of feedback. But we probably need to update this a little bit based on our conversations earlier today. But what are some things we heard from people? One, there was a desire to look at both combining some projects like the interchanges on K seven. What if that were to become one mega project? But also, what could we divide up? One example was one hundred and fifty-eighth and twentieth street, which is a project that would provide a new north-south arterial, basically that parallels K seven, two miles to the east. What if you broke that up into smaller pieces? An evaluation on cost effectiveness. So we'll start to layer that in the next time you see some information here. If we look at some things we know we can quantify as benefits and we talk about the costs, how do these rank in that regard? Some additional information on resiliency. In fact, we added some of those on here regarding paving gravel roads and limiting low water crossings. And how does that make the infrastructure you have more resilient in weather extreme situations? We also heard about expanding economic impact, that if we think of a new interchange, how we currently evaluate those projects are if we have planned or zone commercial or industrial development about that interchange, we assume that'll happen a little bit faster. But we also know that if it's agricultural around some of those interchanges over time, we're likely to see impacts there as well. Lastly, on freight access, we studied and talked about access and reliability to get to I seventy. But a lot of people, as that's kind of a designated freight route within the state, but people want to say, what about access to four thirty-five as well? And that's where that came into play. So those will get factored in yet. But we wanted to show you some of those. What if we take a look at the different priorities we heard from, from the stakeholders or the public? What if we aggregated those together? And what did that change in the rankings? Now, what you'll see will be drafts, but they'll give you an idea of what some of those impacts could be. As we move forward, you're going to be able to have access to a tool to let you test your own priorities. So that if you want to prioritize one thing over another or raise one, lower one, you'll start to see what that changes in that process. So as we start with the public scenario, I know it's a little small to see. Not focusing as much on the actual projects. But what I want to point out is you see a grouping. Quite often, you see projects that are grouped together, a top one or two projects or three projects that rise to the top, another group in the middle, and some other further down. In this example, the one hundred and fifty-eighth and street corridor, which includes a new interchange with I seventy, rises kind of to the top. But not dramatically by far above things like a K five improvements or a portion of the Eastern Gateway. If you look at the stakeholders and what they said in the meetings, the projects change a little bit as far as what those priorities would be. And then as you aggregate them together one more time, you start to see a little bit different score moving forward. So we say that that's part of that visibility we want you to see. What, what do you find is values? What do you want to look at that? And you'll be able to go in here and start to explore what does that mean for impacting projects? That said, we'll, we'll take all the projects that are out there that we've identified and line those up with some of the funding sources that we see. For instance, the Eastern Gateway project is one of those projects that really will only be built with a large portion of federal funds. How would that rank when you look at the federal funding scoring for those projects compared to how Mark scores a project, which are typically the much smaller projects that you absorb from time, from time to time? So with that, we've got some more stakeholder engagement and we're going, and briefing is just like we're doing, that we'll be wrapping up actually this week. So you're, you're on Monday, you're the first elected official's briefing this, this week. I got three more coming in front of you. We're going to conduct an online public meeting as well, which gives everybody the access to the things you've seen here. And you'll be able to dig into the projects and see how do each of these score and evaluate? And what changes if we change those priorities? Do we see a different level? Or what changes if we look at, let's just focus on major roads or new interchanges? Or what happens if we just look at local safety improvements and smaller projects? What are those priorities so you can make those decisions? It's a different conversation when you talk about safety improvements for intersections versus major new projects. And you can balance both of those as you look forward. Our goal is to have a draft report available for you May, in which we'll come back one more time to get some feedback from you all and hopefully wrap this project up in late June, early July, depending on the elected officials' schedules and when we can meet. That gives you time to be prepared for later, late summer, early fall, that next round of KDOT's local console, where they're going to ask for those funding and you're prepared for your budget seasons and the next round of funding applications from Mark next spring. So with that, having to take any questions you might have or any comments?
Where can we get a copy of that data? It's kind of hard to read from up here.
So we're, we're still flushing out some of that information when we go to that online meeting here in a few weeks. We'll publish it so that you're able to go in and dig in on all those projects. There's, again, quite a few projects to list there. We're going to go through them all tonight, but we'll make that all available to you. You'll have time to digest that. And we'll be back to answer any questions you might have on those projects at that time.
Counsel?
I've had the opportunity to have some conversation on this as well. And it, it's, there's a lot of information and it's really, really important. And I think getting the detail and making sure we understand it from the southern part of the county, or at least southwest part of the county in our perspective. We need to have it early and as soon as possible. And I'm sure, I know staff will get it to us as soon as they get it. It's, it's something that we need to be involved in and we need to be part of the team, which is the county, the countywide, because it, it doesn't do us any good to be independent because we probably aren't going to have much voice as Tonganoxi by ourselves. But we also have to be at the table for the county and we need to see it. So the staff, my, to, to staff, as soon as you get the data, get it out, it'd be really helpful. Because there is a lot of information.
There is.
Yeah, because even looking at your logo, we're way over here. And it feels like we're out here out in left field. And I want to make sure that we're represented in a way that is, is positive.
One question on one of your, one of your graphs is you had time designations to certain other areas. Is that only coming from one point, perspective point in the county? Will it be from multiple points in the county?
It'll be from multiple points in proximity of the projects we're evaluating, yes.
Topeka wasn't on there at all that I saw in that specific one. And Topeka is a, I think it's an important tool. First of all, it's, it's a seat of government and unfortunately, but it is. And I didn't see, I didn't think Lawrence was even on the map and and having been involved in this since nineteen ninety-four, it will make sure that it's balanced.
I think typically in these processes, you look at those travel sheds within thirty minutes. Topeka's a little bit beyond that from here. But I think that's a great point on Lawrence, we can be sure that we're trying to address that.
Do you have some sort of data that says what the upper limit of commutes people are willing to undertake?
Yeah, so historically, what we've seen is the average commute, doesn't matter where you're at in the country or anywhere else, has been somewhere around twenty to twenty-five minutes. And that thirty minute becomes a little bit of that breakover point where it becomes undesirable. So somewhere in that range is what we tend to look at. And again, if you're, if you're comparing everything, so long as you're setting a consistent benchmark, you should be getting somewhat same, those same results.
And if you want to live in a rural area, are you willing to go drive farther?
Yeah, a lot of folks are, yeah, so.
We're very lucky here, how well placed we are. People live here and can commute to many places within that timeframe. But also, we have people come here from all those, Lawrence, Topeka, Leavenworth to partake and be customers for us too. So we're pretty fortunate. Sorry, I don't want to belabor this. I know that you have your evening to get to and we have other folks here for other agenda items. But when we do get that other information that we'll read online, please, I hope that it addresses not only roads and infrastructure, but also addresses public transportation options that may be coming forward from this too.
Yeah. And that tool allows you to screen out, to focus on projects that have those multimodal impacts on there as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it, your time.
Awesome. Thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Brackovich, was there anything more there?
Not on this item.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, thank you.
We'll move on to item Bs and ordinance number fifteen-ten. Consider special event permit and draft ordinance fifteen-ten authorizing alcohol consumption on public property for wine and bingo event at the Tonganoxi Public Library. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. This item should be familiar if you recall from last year. What's been presented to the city is an application for a special event to be held in late April, April twenty-seventh, at the public library, a wine bingo event. And this would be a special event with participants pre-registering. So it's not open to the general public, it's a limited, pre-registered group. They would pay ten dollars to enter and they'd be provided one glass of wine by the selected vendor, Z and M Twisted Winery. The application gives a little bit of details about the hours from six to eight P M. And staff do recommend your consideration for approval of this. Because of existing city code requirements or restrictions on consumption of alcohol in public property, in this case, the library facility, we are required to adopt an ordinance, which has been prepared by the city attorney for your consideration tonight with this item. Max Wirestone, the library director, is also here this evening and I'm sure would be thrilled to answer any particularly tough questions you have for us, but I'm also happy to help if you have anything for us.
Great, thank you, Mr. Porter. Are there any questions, counsel? I'm seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance fifteen-ten approving the consumption of alcohol for a private event to be held at the new public library, Fourth and Shawnee, to be held on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, from six to eight P M.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're going to delete item C for tonight. That's not, that's an item that's not ready. We'll move on to item D, review proposed city procurement policy updates. Mr. Brackovich?
Thank you, Mayor. Got a brief presentation that will hopefully highlight some of the, the proposed changes. Really, starting with, let me see if I can get the clicker to work. There it goes. So the current policy we have, believe it or not, was adopted in March of two thousand and six. And it was, it's a great policy today. It was, some components of it made a lot more sense seventeen years ago, maybe even ten years ago, maybe even five years ago. I think what you'll see tonight is that it's not a complete rewrite of the policy. A lot of the procedural things aren't overly cumbersome. And frankly, for an organization our size, work well enough. And so I'll try to distinguish the things that we, we are not proposing any changes on. It's not on this slide, but just in researching old staff files, it looks like at least two, two times since that policy was drafted in oh-six or approved in oh-six, staff at some levels, prior to Mr. Porter or I arriving in twenty seventeen, had at least developed some, a, a draft to propose changes. And it doesn't seem like that ever made it to city council agenda. But I did want to acknowledge that they had taken a look at it. Two things, though, that did make it to city council agenda and were added or adopted to the existing policy or, or created it as, as its own policy adjacent to this is in twenty thirteen, there was a purchasing card policy adopted and we still use that. There's key positions within the, the city staff that have purchasing cards. And then in November of twenty twenty, we added a couple of pages at the end when we were pursuing federal grants. They had very specific requirements that needed to address federal provisions. And so we just simply added two pages at the end of the existing policy as an addendum. Not proposing at this point any changes to the purchasing card policy or add those federal requirements. So really, the challenges in what prompted this request or your consideration this evening was these limit changes to, for department heads and the city manager slash assistant city manager. They're pretty confined limits and, and I think what I'm recommending aren't significant adjustments to that. And then, as I mentioned earlier, you know, procedurally, it, it works fine. Not, not really presenting any major changes there. And then any other discussion you might want to have that we've not identified, be happy to address those where we can. So, next slide. I don't think the clicker's working, sorry. So staff limits and sealed bids, and this is just kind of chronologically following the policy itself. So department heads currently, they have a thousand dollar limit. And I'm proposing to bump that up to twenty-five hundred. Twenty-five hundred is currently the city manager limit. I'm proposing to bump that up to seventy-five hundred. I think both of those adjustments will take into account better the cost of doing business today. We would still present everything on our expense reports that come to you at every city council meeting as, as far as being part of consent agenda, but give us a little more flexibility. You can imagine what, what's happened with cost in, in certain areas and the need to be reactive. I, I personally would feel better about adjusting limits than trying to make justification via emergency purchase type provisions. Sealed bids, I'm suggesting we move that from fifteen thousand and over to twenty thousand and over. And then that we have an existing local preference for Leavenworth County. So anyone that submits, if So anyone that submits, if they're within 3% of the low bid, we have an ability to go with a local preference. And I'm not proposing any changes to that. Although in the past, it was apparent there were some discussions of how to define local and did we want to refine that more to city-type businesses as opposed to just simply the county? And again, that, we'd be open to discussion on that. But I am not, in my proposed changes, I did not include that. Next slide, please. Thank you. Bidding procedures, you see a lot of, on the far right, no changes. They're just listed there for comparison. Small purchases, those adjustments then are just reflective of the limits that I just suggested we, we adjust. Again, the three businesses solicited on small purchases. And then we go into competitive procedure for anything over $7,500. No changes to those. Next, please. Procurement of professional services, again, just to be reflective of that adjustment from 15 to 20,000. This excludes procurement of city engineer and city attorney services, which have special provisions in the policy. And I'm not proposing any changes to those. I, I think those work quite well and give us an ability to scrutinize those type of contracts at a different level. Next slide. Change orders, again, these are, all three are pretty minimal. There are change orders, property acquisition and disposition of property, currently identified at $1,000. Just suggesting to take that to 2,500. Some of this is just better alignment so that we know limits start at 2,500 or 7,500. And, and again, most of the disposition of property, if it's been real property, we bring to you anyway because it exceeds this value. Likewise, when we buy new things like a new vehicle, we're asking you for approval to not only purchase the new vehicle, but to approve a disposition policy for the vehicles that we're suggesting we don't need in the fleet anymore. So again, I, I think all three of these are very minimal and just propose changes to the limits. Next slide. And so then it brings us to, well, what's not changing in the policy? So sole source procurement, there's very specific provisions that I think work well for when we can ask for that consideration and we cannot. Same with emergency procurement. Special provisions, I already talked about leaving the city attorney and city engineer contract selection a little different. And then, of course, staying with prohibiting any acceptance of gratuities for city staff for good ethic and moral reasons. And so I think the final slide maybe, or is that the last one? And so, thank you. So just in summary again, I think after 17 years of no changes to the limits, and although it's worked well, it's presented challenges, I'd say, within the last three to five years, probably heightened by just cost changes that occurred either during COVID or not seemingly going away post-COVID. And giving us the ability to keep things moving at the city without unnecessarily delaying any sort of work. And again, we're talking about things that are $7,500 or less. Again, trying to maintain level limits of those 2,500 and 7,500 and 20,000 just so it's easier for staff to remember and for us to be aligned when we are going out on projects or purchases. And then I think the big one there too, again, is that not proposing any changes to the things that are working just fine. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or if you've got any comments or suggested edits. Be happy to hear. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple. First, I guess on the, your professional services, what exactly is the change that you're proposing on, on that raising of the threshold? And does that affect the bidding on that process?
It, it shouldn't affect the bidding at all. It's just a cutoff for where we could go selectively to three organizations as opposed just to an open bid process. And that change is moving that limit from 15,000 to 20,000.
And I guess simply, why do you want to make that change?
I, I think there's some professional services that are localized and we can more quickly get access to procuring those services as opposed to going through traditional RFP bid process where we create the RFP, spend time advertising it, receive those bids, analyze them in that fashion. I, I think for $20,000, as long as we can find three qualified bidders.
What do you think those are? Which professional services those, those would be?
Sometimes if there's equipment components that exceed or use of heavy equipment that exceed our current staff ability or our own staff equipment, the ability to go out and know that there's, within the Kansas City metropolitan area, there's three agencies that we can just simply ask for bids and say, here you go. We can go address the issue as opposed to, again, a little more cumbersome process with an open bid.
And then just, is there any statutory? What are the Kansas statutory regulations on, on bid processes and advertising those? Does Kansas have any?
Not, not perceived at this size.
Okay. And then, just more generally, because I was, I'm totally ignorant of the procurement policy currently. Do we have good and strong language about related party transactions and their disclosure and avoidance, if possible?
For?
For all procurement, just to make sure that we're not, like, you know what I'm saying? We're not, yeah, related party stuff.
We've, I need to pull up the policy to see what specific language. I know that when we address certain agenda items, there's disclosure requirements. We don't typically do that at the city council level. But for example, like in planning commission, we ask for disclosures if you've heard from any proponents or opponents of an item. I think in a similar fashion, we, if we were to get a bid from a relative or someone that's connected to an employee where there could be a perceived benefit from the employee, that would be a problem and, and issue that we'd want to identify.
Do city employees have to like disclose their own, like, you know, connections to local merchants for that kind of thing?
Mr. Partridge, to be honest, it's not been an issue since I've been here. But I, I could foresee maybe in the future if that were to happen.
I, I just think, I think I would recommend, I mean, as an auditor, I would recommend having good language about related, because I think nothing erodes public trust more than the perception of favoritism. And nothing looks like more like favoritism, whether it is or isn't the related party stuff. That's all.
Okay. We can certainly take a look at that and add that, some, wherever the appropriate places in the policy. Thank you.
And on that topic, I might just add, there is a little bit of overlap with the code of ethics that the city last adopted back in 2020. So we can share that information too and help show where one might cover aspects of that topic.
Any other questions?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for the red line version. That's always helpful. It just makes it so much easier to go through and see your changes. Mr. Partridge may appreciate this. I, I think it's really important that this is a piece that is audited by our external auditors on a annual basis.
Correct.
And they should note, and I think they do, note issues that come up and.
In fairness, they don't test our internal controls. I mean, they know what they are, but they aren't testing them.
And we may want that to happen, though. I think eventually, we're going, as we grow and the city grows, and I think George is 100% appropriate, changing because what cost something 17 years ago is surely not even close. I assure you, Brian Kingsley's not charging us the same price that he did 17 years ago, no question in my mind. But I think appropriate controls in, in place need to be there. And then our audit need, and our auditor needs to be digging in. And the bigger we get, the deeper they need to dig. So I, I think it's an important piece that our auditors are clearly aware of that. At least it is from this councilman's seat, that stuff needs to be on the list.
Mr. Brackovich, do you want to add that language to this and bring it back next time? Or would you prefer a vote tonight?
I'm good with either way. I, I think what Mr. Partridge was just suggesting is some pretty standard language. But if, since we are asking for policy change and it has been 17 years, I don't think another 14 days is gonna, gonna hurt us. And so, and I'd rather make sure that we're capturing the correct intent of what was discussed. And if you are aware, I guess I would just offer this. If you're aware of other communities that have good language or language that you would like to see us include, I'd be happy to take a look at that too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll put this off till next week, our next meeting. I apologize. Okay. Item E, consider approval of purchase of fire department vehicle. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll invite Chief Simmelman up to the podium as well for this item. Included in your agenda packets, I won't steal all his thunder either. That's probably fair of me. So I'll give, give a very brief introduction. The fire department, as you may recall, ordered a vehicle for a purchase in the 2023 adopted budget. And upon recent discussions that I'll let chief detail to you a little more specifically, the fire department is advancing a request for consideration of what would have been a 2024 budget development request for the purchase of a replacement vehicle for another vehicle currently in our fleet. And I'll, I'll be happy to go into a little bit more detail into the financial implications of that item. But I might let him first introduce the scenario to you a little bit more specifically.
All right, thank you. As Dan said, this, this is something we were gonna bring in 2024. Robert Chevrolet notified us here just recently that some 2023s were gonna be available in the SSV model, which is a special services unit to be classified as a response vehicle. Under guidelines for NFPA, it has to be an SSV typed vehicle. Not sure why Chevrolet all of a sudden decided they're gonna release a bunch of these, but I got a feeling they got a chip. So the chips are in and now they don't have any way to get rid of all these vehicles. They did offer it to us at the same cost this year. He did state that next year there will be a substantial cost increase and not really knowing when they're gonna be available. With that said, this is why we're bringing it to you early. The vehicle that we have in place right now is a 2010 F-250 utility vehicle. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but you've probably seen less fire trucks on the road than you typically used to. We're starting to use our pickup and utilities for medical calls. We kind of looked at some risk reduction deals, taking those big rigs off the streets and putting the trucks on there. Makes a little more sense. Something bad happens, it's easier to replace a $50,000 vehicle than it is a $250,000 to $500,000 vehicle now. So we're trying to make some changes in our response patterns and what we're responding on. Even our mutual aid calls, we're starting to send just our pickups with two people and tools. We're not sending our big, big apparatus out on mutual aid deals. Dirt roads and big trucks make bad accidents. So it's kind of a risk reduction we've looked at internally in the command staff and myself. That's what we kind of recommended. That's how we're running our department. So I bring this to you. One of the advantages, like I said, would be obtaining it at this year's cost. We would then, in turn, when we get that vehicle, make some changes within our fleet and then sell the 2010 F-250 that we have. It's in great shape. It is, it does score at about a 23 to 24, I think, on our scoring matrix because of its age. And there are a few things that we'll probably mechanically need, we'll disclose if we sell it. But a couple of them, you know, it could be a major issue down the road. So that's kind of why we're bringing it to you now. One of the other perks that this brought with it is Chevy did offer on a fleet vehicle this time at a five-year, 100,000 mile warranty. Typically, you don't get that in a fleet. You get a three-year, 36,000. This would stay in line too with the shop being able to service the vehicles because it's the same, basically same setup as a Tahoe for engine and fluids and things like that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council, do you have any questions? Thanks, Chief. Mr. Porter, what did you have more?
The only other item I wanted to note was, as this wasn't anticipated last summer when we built 2023's budget, the funding source is an important consideration to make. The fires, equipment fund is the funding source identified and proposed for this. That's funded by a fee applied to all residential and non-residential water bill accounts. Those fees are, are special assessments collected to fund capital and equipment needs for the fire service that uses water to prevent and fight fires in our city. That fund has built incrementally fund balance over this last several years. We're currently sitting at close to $275,000 in funds available today. At the end of this year, before this purchase, we anticipated closing close to $285,000 or $290,000 in funds available in that fund. This would be a mid-year adjustment that we'd bring back with a slight mid-year adjustment for the special highway fund at a future meeting. But again, the $44,000, or close to $44,600 cost of this vehicle is well within the funds available on hand today. And it also will not negatively impact any future CMIP items planned for the fire services in the city's current capital and maintenance improvement plan. The only other thing I'd like to add is the vehicle sale proceeds, should that be approved tonight, would go into the fire equipment fund and help recoup some of the new cost of the additional vehicle being purchased. And that's proposed via Purple Wave, which is our most recent typical disposition for vehicles and equipment. And we've had very good outcomes in our bids in the last several years with that. And that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Any questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we authorize the staff to purchase a 2023 Chevy 1500 four-wheel drive crew cab from Robert Chevrolet for a amount not to exceed $44,568.90. And do we, is that all one good for the authorization to sell the other one? Or do we need a separate year?
That, we've done it combined in the last couple of chances.
With that, authorize the disposition of the city's 2010 Ford F-250 via Purple Wave. And it's old.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Chief. Moving on to the city manager agenda. Mr. Brackovich, do you have anything?
No further items. Just I will try to follow up with either Commissioner Steben or county staff on the request for a, a meeting with city council.
I would really, when you have that conversation, I'd really like to make it clear what kind of meeting that is because the last time we were there, we thought it was a work session and it turned into a, something else. So you just need to know what it is, what we're stepping into.
I will definitely get the details. I think just what I heard about the two other meetings is the, the board of county commissioners actually went to those cities and tried to do a work session prior to those city council meetings. And so if that's the case, I'll, I'll maybe suggest that. If Monday evenings are usually good for you folks. But I'll get as many details as I can.
I appreciate that.
Thanks, Mayor.
City attorney agenda, Mr. Chris.
I have no items.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I have no items.
Thank you. City council agenda, any council members have anything to add?
None here.
All right. On my agenda, I have proclamation proclaiming April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Tongonoxie. It was, it should be in your packet where you can read it. I would like to make, I would like to make that proclamation with the city's approval. So if I could have a motion and a vote on that, I'd appreciate it.
I would make a motion that we approve the proclamation by the mayor of, for the April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Tongonoxie.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I have nothing more. Mr. Dale?
Yes, I've, I have prepared a statement. Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the governing body, I would appreciate the opportunity to take this time to formally introduce a motion that upon a majority vote of the duly elected representatives of the city of Tongonoxie shall thereby adjourn this regularly, regularly scheduled meeting of the city council of. shall thereby adjourn this regularly, regularly scheduled meeting of the city council of Tongonoxie, county of Leavenworth, state of Kansas, on this third day of April in the year of our Lord 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?